Item number eight, consideration of approving the budget committee report dated November 16, 2017. Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget Committee of the Police Jury met at 4:00 PM today, November 16th. The committee recommended approval of the following items from the parish's Ward Two and Ward Eight Gaming Funds. Gravity Drainage District Number Nine of Ward Two, forty-five thousand nine hundred dollars for costs associated with drainage and ditch improvements on Dolphin Ball Road. Gravity Drainage District Number Nine of Ward Two, fifty-two thousand four hundred and seventy dollars for the purchase of installation of metal building for the district. Community Center Playground District Number Seven of Ward Two, two hundred thousand for costs associated with the construction of Cover Pavilion for Hayes Park. Ward Eight Fire Protection Number Two, fourteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars for matching funds for the purchase of extraction equipment for the district. The committee also received the presentation of the proposed 2008 Police Jury Budget from Parish Administrator Brian Bean. The proposed Police Jury Budget for 2018 is two-hundred and thirty-three point five million, which is a three-point-nine percent increase from 2017 budget of two-hundred and twenty-four point seven million. Sixty-three percent of the increase is due to capital projects such as road and bridge improvements, construction of new facilities, drainage, and other important investments. The operating portion of the budget is one-point-nine percent increase over the current year, which is modest, especially in the growth environment. Property taxes are projected to increase by four-point-seven percent in 2018, and sales tax revenues are anticipated to increase by seventeen percent. Staff is anticipating that the gaming revenue levels may decrease by two-point-five percent in 2018. That is the end of my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. White. I have a motion by Mr. White.
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Collins. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Moving on to item number nine, consideration of adopting a resolution approving issuance by Recreation District Number One of Ward Three of Calhoun Parish, Louisiana, of not to exceed nine million ten thousand, general obligation refunding bond series 2017. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Barris. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry.
Move on to ten.
Moving on to, moving on to item number ten.
You're reading it now.
Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the request of the Board of Commissioners of Ward Five Fire Protection District Number One and establishing a per dim to be paid to each Commissioner in the amount of one hundred dollars for each meeting attended. I have a motion by Ms. Trimmie and a second by Mr. Scott. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Item number eleven, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the recommendations of the terms of the industrial tax exemption contract between the state of Louisiana, the Louisiana Department of Economic Development, and Phillips 66 with respect to its manufacturing plant located in Wesley. I have a motion by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Appshire. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Item number twelve, take appropriate actions on a request by JDAD LLC to rezone from general commercial to light industrial to allow industrial development, distillery at 5721 Common Street in Ward Three. I have a motion by Mr. Scott to oppose and a second by Ms. Mayo. The planning and board, the planning and zoning board met on Tuesday, November 14, 2017, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted with stipulations. Is there any discussion? Any other objection? That motion will carry. We do have discussion. Mr. Scott.
Mr. Crane.
Yes, sir.
After, your discussions with the gentleman, they are going to put a brick facade, so it is going to be according to what we would like to see in a, in a future overlay district. He's agreed to do some of those things?
Yes, sir. He sure has.
So you have a conceptual, so you have some conceptuals that you're happy with?
Yes.
I hate conceptuals. I like real stuff, but I understand. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Item number twelve, take appropriate actions on, no, 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 item thirteen. Take appropriate action on request by Deborah Aldwin-Poo to rezone from agriculture to recreational vehicle park to allow a recreational vehicle park at 1720 Lewis Street in Ward Four. The planning and zoning board met on Tuesday, November 14, 2017, and voted unanimously to recommend that that request be granted with stipulations.
Mr. Andrew Pont.
I would have to move to overturn the decision of the planning and zoning.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont to overturn the planning and zoning board and a second by Ms. Trimmie.
May I make a comment?
You have the floor, Mr. Andrew Pont.
I understand the, the nature of why maybe the zoning board voted to do that, but it goes against the very grain of what we're trying to accomplish nowadays, and that's eliminate those kind of things. And I, for me to vote, to uphold it, I think would be, would be wrong in sight of the fact that we're trying to bring all of these things under one umbrella. So, I.
I yield back. Thank you, Mr. Andrew Pont. Mr. Barris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I concur with Mr. Andrew Pont, just because I've had recent situations with a handful of folks. Some of them, you know, that was, that was their income. That was, you know, some, most of their income. But, you know, hey, they complied. Said, hey, the rules are the rules. Even though it put them out, I just, I believe in staying consistent and, because if we open that door, I guarantee you right now, if you just start driving around, there's probably a couple of hundred that we hadn't stumbled upon right now. So if we open the door, then all that's okay. No hardship, no nothing. It's just all of a sudden, okay. So with that, I yield back. Thank you for those comments, Mr. Barris.
Any other discussion? Any objection?
Mr. President, I don't know if the applicant is here, and sometimes the rules between planning and zoning can get, can get confused with our rules. So if we can maybe see if the applicant is here.
Yes. Is the applicant present tonight? Is the applicant present tonight? Seeing none?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, legal counsel. That motion will carry. Moving on to item number fourteen, take appropriate actions on request by Charles Facilio to rezone from general commercial to light industrial to allow commercial development at 6109 Common Street in Ward Three. The planning and zoning board met on Tuesday, November 14, 2017, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted with stipulations. I have a motion by Mr. Scott and a second by Mr. Guillory to oppose planning and zoning. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Dennis, we have discussion by Mr. Scott.
Mr. Crane, did you kind of speak to the same gentleman? Can I explain what we're trying to do on that corridor?
Yes, sir. They, they've agreed to do some upgrades to the building.
Is Mr. Facilio here tonight?
Yes.
I'm representing.
Please come, please state your name and address for the record, please.
I just have one request, and I don't think it's a lot to ask, but hurricane fences with slats in it, it's not really, when you drive by it, they might as well not even be there. So I would like to specify that a six-foot privacy fence, wooden slat. So we're trying to make that corridor a little more presentable over time. So the hurricane fence with the slats, that's just, I would prefer to not have that on that. If, if he would agree to that, that's the only thing I would like to add, is a stipulation that it would have to be the wooden privacy fence.
Dog ear?
My client will definitely agree to that.
He can do cat ear, dog ear, whatever kind of ear, just a wooden privacy fence. I would appreciate that if he would be able to do that for the citizens.
Yes, sir. I'll let him know.
All right. Well, I'm going to make it as a motion.
Yes, sir. I'll, I'll let him know that it passed with that stipulation.
So I'd like to, you know, it's already in here. I just want to take out or metal crane, metal hurricane type with slats. So it will be a wooden privacy fence.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And a second by Mr. Forner.
I'll just, I'll.
Thank you so much.
Dog ear. Isn't that the dog gear?
Go ahead, Mr. Dennis.
President, this is Ms. Robin Besson, but just so for the record.
Yes.
Address?
Well, Robin Besson, 1010 Lakeland Drive, Lake Charles.
I thought I requested, didn't I? Okay. All right. Thank you so much. Motion carry on that item. Moving on to item number fifteen.
Moved to uphold planning and zoning.
Take appropriate action on request by Mr. Charles Appshire to rezone from mixed residential to light industrial to allow light industrial development machine shop at 323 Laje Road in Ward Three. The planning and zoning board met on Tuesday, November 14, 2017, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted with stipulations. I have a motion by Mr. Scott to oppose planning and zoning and a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Moving on to item number sixteen, take appropriate action on request by Mr. Stephen Cornerhand to rezone from agriculture manufactured home park.
Move to uphold planning and zoning.
To light commercial and general commercial to light industrial to allow industrial development at 161 East Davis Dugoss Road in Ward Four. I have a motion by Mr. Barris to oppose planning and zoning and a second by Mr. Collins. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Move to discuss. Take appropriate actions on request by North Bay Properties to rezone from light industrial to recreational vehicle park to allow a recreational vehicle park at 2926 Highway 90 West in Ward Four. The planning and zoning board met on Tuesday, November 14, 2017, and voted unanimously to recommend that that request be granted with stipulations. We do have discussion by Mr. Andrew Pont.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, there's one stipulation in there that I would ask that we would remove, and that is the fencing around the property. It was originally rezoned for a worker village. The fence, six-foot privacy fence, was accepted. They're asking tonight that it be downzoned to RV Mobile Home Park. There are many of those areas that have no fences around their facilities. So in light of the fact that there's a wooded, a buffer zone on the east side, west side, and the north side, I think that's sufficient as far as I'm concerned. The applicant is here tonight, and I visited with Mr. Crane, and you can add Wes, whatever you want to add, but basically, Mr. Crane said that that was not an unreasonable request. And so I ask that that stipulation be removed from, from the, well, the stipulation be removed, I guess, is what I need to say.
Is that a form of, go ahead, Mr. Gapp.
Right now, we only have a motion to discuss on the floor.
To discuss, yes, that's all.
So maybe to uphold planning and zoning with removal of the fencing requirement.
Correct.
Okay.
Well.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont with a second by Mr.
Mr. Crane.
Go ahead, Mr. Crane. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to clarify, Mr. Andrew Pont, I, I don't think we have a problem with removing the fence at this time. The reason the fencing is, is because it, there's agricultural property adjacent to, agriculturally zoned property adjacent to this. So, so if there's any sort of residential use that's put there, then that's typically when the fencing would be required. However, Mr. Andrew Pont is correct. There is, it's a, it's wooded property surrounding this. So I don't know if it would be agreeable that at a later date, depending on what that property develops to, if someone wants to put a residential subdivision there, then perhaps the park owner would be willing to put up a fence at that time. And, and certainly that can be discussed.
Well, he's here, so.
Okay, so.
Would we like for the owner to come up and speak and verify that that would be the case? Please state your name and address.
Artis Sanders, 1302 Benmore, Overlook, Baytown, Texas. And we're, we're good with that.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We still have discussion. Mr. Barris.
Thank you. Excuse me. So say the, the RV park does its thing and, and goes along and nothing happens adjacent to it, and this site sells. Can we make it to where this kind of rides with, like the next, the next owner will kind of? Yes, I, I think that would be a wise thing to do.
Okay, thank you.
Include that in my recommendation.
Will do, Mr. Andrew Pont. Mr. Forner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I disagree that, that this is no impact to the neighborhood. You can, you can call this an RV park. You can call it whatever you want to call it, but it's a worker village. That's, all these RV parks are put in for right now is for worker villages, and, and they agreed to the fence. I don't have a heartburn of what kind of fence it is, since there is wooded area and, and privacy doesn't have to be there. But the neighbors that live directly through these woods, there are residential areas that abut this property with a little bit of area where people can really hide as they run in and out. Some of the neighbors have had break-ins from the previous park that was there, and, and this is a worker village. It's, it's, just happens to be zoned as an RV park, but everybody knows that this is a worker village. And I think that the fence ought to stay in there for that purpose. And I yield that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forner. Vice President Crane.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll have to agree with Mr. Andrew Pont. The, we did a osprey off of Big Lake Road, a very good example. They got a good tree line buffer, neighborhood right behind them. So, I mean, there's really no need for a fence. There's a drainage cow, drainage canal in between, but still, there's a good wooded buffer that protects it. So I would support you on that, Mr. Andrew Pont. But I'm done.
Thank you. Mr. Appshire.
Sir, I'm good.
No, that's it. Me.
All right. Mr. Andrew Pont.
Let me just make one more comment. And look, I don't have a problem with fences. The only thing is, I equate fences to locks on doors. You want to be dishonest, a fence or a lock on a door is not going to keep you from doing wrong. So that, I yield back.
Any discussion?
Mr. Barris.
We do have one more speaker on this item. It's Mr. Ronnie Bowers here. Please come forward, Mr. Bowers, and please state your name and address for the record. Thank you, sir.
My name is Ronnie Bowers, and I live at 1729 White Acres Drive, which is the subdivision right, right behind where the RV park is going in. And whenever the, whenever the Mobile Home Park was there before, I've, I've been there for 24 years. And when Pin Oak was there, when Pin Oak was open, it was a, it was a bad trailer park. My, my shop, which is on the back of my property, was attempted to be broken into three times. Okay? I've got a lot of equipment. I've got a lot of machines, a lot of tools in my shop. So I had to pay to put in a security system to protect that. Okay? Now, there's nothing stopping anybody between there, between my property and this RV park. Okay? I don't know who's going to be in there. And as far as the RV park itself, I have no problem with them putting an RV park in there. Whenever I was talking, speaking against the, the worker village a year and a half ago, I mentioned that then, that I wouldn't have a problem if it was a trailer park going back in there. But I did have a problem with the worker village, and I'm not backing off what I said then. I don't have a problem with the RV park. I would like to see the stipulations stay in to where a fence is, to where a fence is surrounding the property like it was, like they, like the same company agreed to in the original, the original application with the worker village. I mean, this is, this is what they, they had agreed to before. Now, they're going to be putting in 144 spaces in there, which is a lot more than, than they had before, and I still don't have a problem with that. But they're going to be making, they're going to be making enough money to pay to put a, to put a privacy fence up at the rates that they're charging for these, for the RVs now. And I mean, this is, it's, it's labeled, it's labeled as an RV park, but it's, it's really, it's really a worker, worker village, basically, kind of like Les said. I mean, you're going to, you're not going to have somebody coming through town and say, hey, I think I'll just pull in there and stay the weekend. That's not what, that's not the kind of RV park it is. I mean, let's, let's face it. But still, I don't have a problem with that. These are working people. They have their own property. They're bringing in their own campers, their own motorhomes. They're going to be staying in them. You know, they're going to, but there, there could be some bad apples in the crowd, and we don't know that. And, but I would like to, I would appreciate it if we could, if we could keep the, keep the privacy fence on the perimeter of property. I mean, I, I think that's a, I think that's a fair request. And they, that's what, that was one of the items that they, that planning and zoning approved Tuesday night, is to, is to keep those stipulations in.
Go ahead, Mr. Barris. Go ahead, Mr. Barris.
Thank you. You know, I guess the more I think about it, the, I have a, I have a particular area in, in mind, and I know we're putting in these catch-all, these, these, safety catches for down the road. But, you know, I don't know if I want to trust that, trust that. I, I, I would feel better doing a fence right now. You know, because the, the incident I'm talking about, the situation I'm talking about, there's a park, there was a grandfathering of, you know, doesn't have to do it now. You know, this half is, only half of it has to be done. And, you know, now these neighbors are sitting there, and they've got 60-something brand-new neighbors, and they, sometimes they meet them right there in the morning when they walk out the front door of their camper and do their thing. And that's a heck of a way to meet somebody. But, you know, I don't know. I just, with good conscience, I don't think I could let it go without asking for the fence. They were going to put a fence up anyway. I mean, heck, now they're not even having to provide the houses. The people are bringing their own houses. So, I mean, heck, what's it, what's wrong with a fence?
Mr. Scott.
How close is the nearest residence, Mr. Crane?
Um, let's see. I'm looking at the map here. There's some residents that are on Highway 90 right there. But the closest subdivision, like Mr. Bauer's subdivision, is further to the east. And then there's another subdivision.
We're about 400 feet.
Yeah, about four or 500 feet. And then there's another subdivision to the west on Marcellus Drive. Yeah. So there's some tracts of land, you know, some fairly large tracts of land in between them. You know, as a, as a planning tool, you know, fencing is really used for, for a visual purpose. It's to screen out other land uses that are not compat, maybe not as compatible as this particular. That's what we use, you know, screening for. It's not for really the safety or letting people go from one property to another, and that's called trespassing. And so that's where the sheriff's office would get involved. If somebody's trespassing on those properties to get to somebody else's property, that's, that's where the sheriff's office would come in. But obviously, it's, it could be dual.
Well, I guess I'm kind of leaning towards, you know, when we deal with constituents, perception is reality. Regardless of that fence is safe or not.
Sure.
It's still a fence. And, you know, I do know how much money this facility would bring in, because I've played with some of those numbers, and we've done a lot of this. Is there a way that maybe the owner would be willing to phase this in, so agree to it now, and maybe start on a certain point, Mr. Andrew Pont, and give him, I mean, I'm just, if that's something you'd entertain, at least me discussing with him? I mean.
Well, first of all, it's not my decision to make.
I understand.
But let me just put it to you this way. That buffer zone is, is a lot of trees on the north, the east, and the west side. And, and I don't know what a fence would do with all those trees there. Now, they have agreed, if the, if they take the, the trees down and they put a residential subdivision there, then they're willing to put up a fence. And Wes is right on target. That's, you know, and the, you can put up a fence, and what good would it do?
Looks good.
You know?
This looks good.
It looks good. But I mean, why, would you spend $10 if you didn't?
I do. I might be the wrong guy to ask that. I believe in spending good money to make good money.
And if I thought that the fence would, would be necessary, I'd be the first to tell you that. But I, right now, no.
All right, well, I guess I'll ask.
It'll deter them, it'll deter them from crossing through the woods.
You have the floor, Mr. Scott.
Mr. Sanders, if you don't mind?
Yes.
Yeah, come in and back up. So do you have a problem if we were trying to work, you know, that's what we've been doing all night, depending on?
Well, as, as I was coming here, I passed two RV parks, and none of them had fences. A work, a work camp is one thing. Like, everybody started by us making a lot of money. We bought it in November of 2013. We drew one month's rent, and the judge said, don't do that anymore. Just quietly get people out. And we quietly got people out. We never formally evicted anyone. We worked with the people. So as far as making money, I hadn't drawn a penny, except the one month, $8,000. And that was in 2013. So I would like to make some money. I agree with Mr. Andrew Pont. A fence is like a lock. I mean, you, you can go through a fence in seconds. It's no big deal. These woods are big woods. They haven't been logged, I'm just guessing, in 30, 40 years. There's some gigantic trees in there. I can't even walk in there. You, you don't even walk in there, because it's, it's, like I said, 30, 40 years, nobody's been in there. So I will agree that somebody, one of our neighbors wants to do something residential, I'll work with them. I'll build a fence with them and do exactly what the fence supposed to do. Build privacy for them and for us. I see that point. But as far as people going and robbing people, I don't, I want to be careful about how it's stated. But Pin Oak was a bad place. Deputy of the Sheriff's Department had to come out there, they told me personally twice a day. And we didn't get any money for it. We asked people, you know, to please get out. We helped them. Some had to tear, tear their trailers down. They couldn't even move. They tore 19 trailers down. And we didn't. We just let them go. So I hear you, but.
Well, thank you for that.
I like to have no fence.
One more discussion point. So he doesn't own all the trees and the brush on the side of it. So he's, so if they start clearing now, the brush is what makes more of a boundary than the trees. So if somebody goes in there and starts brushing this thing out, that opens up a whole new, well, you haven't changed it to residential yet. That's what I have a problem with. Because it's still, now you've opened the area up, and we see people running out there with them little mulch machines all day. It don't cost nothing anymore to go through and mulch it, because your property looks better, it sells easier. You can do it in a day. So I'm going to have a problem with sticking to just the residential part. I'm, I don't know how we would add a stipulation saying if, if it's cleared to a point to where it is a visible to the surroundings, you know, that would be a little more palatable for me than to just say residential, because I see too much land cleared for no reason nowadays. So that's just my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Mr. Forner.
Thank you. It, it, this, this park was, was rezoned to a workforce camp. And it never took place. It's, it's been long enough ago to where this should actually reverted back to its original zoning and without the grandfathering. And so I think we're, we're going, we're, we're doing some good things here to just go ahead and make this an RV park. I don't have a problem with the RV park at all. They agreed to a fence because it was a workforce village. It's labeled an RV park, but it's still going to be a workforce village. And like Mr. Bowers was saying, people aren't just going to drive down the road and pull in because it's a cool place to, to go camping. And it's not the purpose of it. And I, I just think that they ought to stick with the, whether it's a privacy fence or a, or a chain link fence, I don't have a problem either way. But I think a fence needs to be there, because the path of least resistance is what people go by. And if they can just walk through the woods, and I don't know if they can, I don't know, Mr. Bowers, can you just casually walk through the woods at some point?
There's, there's, there's going to be a trail from the Pin Oak Trailer Park over to, over to our property.
Yeah. So, I mean, there's, there's, the path of least resistance is there, and if they can just casually walk out of the park and, and do what they want to do, then that's what they're going to do. But if they have to walk through the highway to get out, they're not going to then go walk back into the woods to go walk into the woods.
And they used to ride four-wheelers and everything else out there, too.
Yeah. And, and that's, that's neither here nor there, but I, I just think that they agreed to the fence, they ought to stay with the fence. Thank you.
Mr. Andrew Pont.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure the tenants that were living there didn't have four-wheelers, because they barely could afford to make ends meet. But the point I want to make is this. In all the years that it was called Pin Oak Trailer Park, there were 22 pit bulls in that, or in that park, whatever, that these people bought it out. That's all gone. The drugers are gone. That was a drug haven. That's gone. And I think I've, I've been working with these people now for a year and a half, two years, whatever it is. And I'm convinced that their heart is in the right place, and they will do whatever is necessary when the time comes. All these hypothetical things about this is going to happen, that, we don't know that. That's just like taking people from software electors in Louisiana and sending them to Idaho to work. Are they criminals? I don't think so. People are coming down here to go to work. Tuesday night, when I left here, was after whatever time it was. Those guys were just getting off those buses over here by the casinos, just getting off work. You think a guy worked 12 hours a day wants, some of them are, because you've got a rotten apple in every bushel. a rotten apple in every bushel, but to ask people to put a fence, just to say you've got a fence, I don't think it's a legitimate reason to put it, I just don't. And they have agreed to do so in the event of, and there's no hesitation about it, I yield back.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew Point. Mr. Scott.
So, the event of, so when he said he's going to work with the residents at his total expense, not a partnership, I'm going to help, I mean, it's understood that he would in the full cost, that's just to clarify that. And then I'm reading number five, it says that natural screening be maintained and that a six-foot privacy fence. So, if he doesn't even own the natural screening, how is he even going to maintain that? It's in the stipulation that the natural screening be maintained and a six-foot fence. So, how's that stipulation even going to work? Because I know it's all about words, every time we try to figure something out, "Whoa, it's written this way, and we got to stick to what it says, and I don't really have..." So, how does that work? I know that's a tough one, maybe, or really, maybe not.
Well, I think there is some natural screening on the property that was identified early on, and that's what we were talking about. I just don't know how much of that is now.
So, but will that natural screening still maintain where it is? Or is he going to clear that, hoping them trees? Mr. Sanders, I guess that's what I need to ask the question to.
Come up to the podium if you don't mind, sir. Can you come to the podium, please? Thank you.
The only part that touches, I'm sorry, the only part that touches another person's house is right up front on the east side. He's already put a wall up, but that's not even where the RV park is going to be, it's back. So, it really, he'll see 100-year-old live oak trees, that's what he sees. It's a beautiful piece of property. So, you know, that's the only screening, and he's put it up, he's a nice guy, real nice guy. So, and I don't have any problem with the neighbors, if they want to build a subdivision, more power to them, I'll try to help.
All right, I'm fine with it, I'll call, of course.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Mr. Barris.
Well, let's look at it from the flip side. These, your new guests are going to be coming in, well, man, they don't know who lives around there, man, but wouldn't a fence make them feel a little better? Kind of a safety blanket for them, you know, that's how I put it to the owner of the trailer park that I was speaking about earlier. I said, you know, these people are moving here, they're living, they're parking their RV right next to these people, the residents, they don't know those people had them, so, you know, I mean, look at it as an upselling point, I mean, I'm just saying.
Any other questions, Mr. Gilbry?
No. Go ahead, Wes.
I didn't even see you.
One more quick-
Go ahead, Mr. Fornum, I didn't even see you, I'm sorry.
I want to make sure that we understand that there's not an option to help, because I heard that come out of his mouth just now, that I'll try to help, if something comes along, I'll try to help.
And if I may-
Go ahead, Mr. Gaff.
Just to restate the question, as I see it, and maybe Ms. Kathy can correct me if I'm wrong, either by amendment of the main motion or by agreement of the applicant, I've got the motion to, is to allow rezoning with stipulations, removing the fencing requirement within, with stipulation that fencing may be required by Director of Planning once any adjacent property is developed.
Yes.
That is the motion right now that I have.
And can I-
Go ahead, Mr. Crane.
Can I clarify that? If the property is zoned or developed commercially or industrial, then the fencing is not required under the ordinance at this time.
Okay. I made the motion a little broader by just putting it in discretion of the director.
At this time, Ms. Kathy, can we just move forward on a roll call vote so that we can actually see where we're at on this side?
And if I may-
Go ahead, Mr. Gaff.
A yes vote would allow no fencing.
Exactly, Mr. Gaff. Thank you so much. You may proceed, Ms. Kathy.
Mr. Abshar?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Point?
Yes.
Mr. Barris?
No.
Mr. Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Fornum?
No.
Mr. Gilbry?
Yes.
Mr. Landry, I believe, left?
Yes.
Tour's left? Ms. Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Trimmie?
Yes.
And Mr. White?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Ms. Kathy.
You're welcome.
Moving on to item number 18. Take appropriate action on request by Golf Mobile Park to amend ordinance number 6925 that the development must adhere to site plan to allow a revised site plan in the 800 block of Red Davis McCallister Road in Ward 3.
Move on to uphold planning and zoning.
The Planning and Zoning Board met on Tuesday, November 14, 2017, and voted unanimously that recommended that the request be granted with stipulations. I have a motion by Mr. Scott and a second by Ms. Mayo. Is there any discussion? Is there any objection? That motion will carry. Moving on to item number 19. Take appropriate actions on request by FMN Enterprises to rezone from mixed residential to light commercial to allow commercial development at 2719 Glenly Road in Ward 3. The Planning and Zoning Board met on Tuesday, November 14, 2017, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be denied.
Move to uphold planning and zoning.
I have a motion by Vice President Brain to uphold planning and zoning, and I have a second by Mr. Scott. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Moving on to item number- Moving, thank you. Moving on to item-
Thank you all.
Thank you. You guys have a good night.
I thought they were just here to listen.
Moving on to item number 20. Consideration of approving the property sale conducted on October 31, 2017 on the following cases. Can I get a motion to take all of these bullets? If possible. I have a motion by Mr. White, and I have a second by Mr. Scott. Let me read those into the record.
Sure, you got it.
A, 307 Phillips Road, Westlake, Danny Taylor for $25,000. B, 506 Contour Drive, Lee Charles, Marvin Williams for $32,000. C, 506 Contour Drive, Lee Charles, Marvin Williams for $12,300. D, Babinow Road, Soffler, Jeff McKinney for $100. I had a motion by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Scott. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Moving on to item number 21. Consideration of adopting the ordinance following-
21 up.
-allowing the disposition of the police jury's interests for the following adjudicated properties. I have a motion by Mr. Scott to take all those bullets-
Here.
-and I have a second by Mr. White. Thank you so much. Let me read those into the record. A, 2133 Brook Street. B, Mador Street, Noviceville address. C, 301 Goss Boulevard. D, 2429 Dewey Street. E, 521 Adams Street. F, 1501 Winterhalter Street. I had a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Item number 22. Thank you, Ms. Trimmie. Consideration of adopting an ordinance authorizing the purchase of property-
Move on 22.
I'll move on 22.
Located at 2309 Timberlane Drive. Through funding received from the Flooding and Flood Mitigation Assistance Grant Program to mitigate future flood losses of this repetitive loss structure. I had a motion by Mr. Fornum and a second by Mr. Scott. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Moving on to item number 23. Take appropriate actions on bids received by the parish purchasing agent for mosquito-controlled chemicals. I have a motion by Ms. Trimmie and a second by Ms. Mayo. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Moving on to item number 22. Consideration of authorizing a parish purchasing agent to advertise for bids for the Caligula Correctional Center Security Door and Computer Upgrade Project. I have a motion by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. 25. I have a motion to adjourn, I have a motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Ms. Mayo. We're now adjourned.